Let's go ahead and get started and thank you all for joining our Zoom meeting. We will call this meeting to order the Rockford Public Schools Committee of the Whole at 5:32 PM, and I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Present.
Mr. Rollins? Tim, are you unmuted, Mr. Rollins? I'll mark him as here.
Okay.
Mr. Scavano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor? And Ms. Stanford?
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I just want to remind board members that hold your questions until the end of each presentation and we'll allow the presenter to get through their their presentation before we ask for questions. The first item of business tonight is the amended or corrected minutes of February 2nd. I think there was only one minor change, the correction of the principals from West or no.
Westview.
Westview, yeah, there you go, was the other principal that was there. So I just want to ask if there's any other additional changes or corrections? And is there a consensus for us to approve those minutes then?
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay. All right, we'll approve those. So our first order of business tonight is Dr. Wolf presenting a Jackson Charter School renewal recommendation. So Dr. Wolf, you have the mic.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scavano, and good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to present. Rather than doing a separate presentation that has bells and whistles, I'm using exactly what is in Board Docs. So if you wanted to follow along, you have it right on your screen in front of you. I will also share my screen. If I'm allowed to do that. The host is disabled. Attendees, screen sharing. So who is our host and can you allow me to share?
Just pass it over to you, Travis.
Oh. Wow, all powerful, okay. Thank you. Okay, so for the Jackson Charter renewal, again, to remind folks of items that you've already heard, the contract for Jackson Charter School expires on June 30th of this year, and we are working to strike an actionable balance between autonomy and accountability. So charter schools have considerable autonomy and variances from what we as a public school entity need to do relative to percentage of teachers who are licensed, et cetera. And in exchange for that greater autonomy, they have stronger accountability when it's worked into the contract. Now, we also want to embed turnaround principles for school improvement. Ms. Baker and Mr. Williams have been very clear that they certainly want better results for the students at Jackson, and we concur with them. By way of background, you saw many of the things in February when we presented that deep dive into various data, and I've included all of those data elements into Board Docs for your convenience. But there was the ISBE Performance Review, which is the summative score derived from the state's plan to meet the federal law, and it includes testing proficiency and growth, chronic absenteeism, those sorts of items, our performance review, and our framework. So all of that is located in Board Docs with you. Additional background, we worked with multiple partners to get where we felt very comfortable going forward with this embedding turnaround principles. It's a new concept in authorizing. The previous decision was really binary. You renewed or you voted to close. This renewal with conditions is being borne out in research, and so we worked with administration from the Department of Education in Missouri, who has been one of the leaders in turnaround projects with charter schools. We worked with Mary Bradley, who is the CEO of the National Charter School Institute. We worked with Schoolworks, who is a national leader in authorizing and in assisting charter operated schools. And of course, our partners at the National Association is charter school authorizers, along with Mr. Turvitz, David Turvitz at ISBE. This, so as we looked at the second renewal cycle, they had the original charter compact, and that is referenced in their application, and this would be the second renewal. We updated what you see in Board Docs with the charter renewal report with the renewal site report and the ISP documents. There are choices for the Board of Education. There are various years of renewal, and they can go under law from one year up to 10 years. We, in consultation with a wide range of people, especially our superintendent, are recommending three years because all of the research over the last two and a half decades, it says to make substantial school improvement gains, you need three to five years. And Jackson has really remade themselves. They eliminated a third of their grade levels, the sixth or eighth grade going into the school level, which dropped their population down by about a third. As of this past Friday, they had 222 students enrolled according to the state's student information system. So because so many things were new, we wanted to give them a fair chance to demonstrate that their various improvement strategies were working. So that's why we're recommending three years. The other choice that could have been was appellate. So if we voted, if I recommend it, you voted to not renew Jackson, then they would have a recourse to appeal that decision. And if they prevailed at that, then they would be chartered by that organization, and the Board of Education would still be required to pay the per capita tuition charge. So our solution is a three-year renewal with conditions. We believe that the conditions then, and again, I want to thank and highlight the work that Ms. Baker and Mr. Williams are doing on behalf of the students there. They are a 1003A, that's the Title I Grant Program for schools that were identified for improvement. And so they're working on refining their three-year school improvement plan. We would like to include that in there and fully support the work that they're doing. We also, as you saw, when we brought forward the Legacy and Galapagos renewals, we have a two-tiered matrix for the next set of renewal recommendations that is attached to Board Docs for you. A new thing that we want to do at Jackson is an annual implementation visit and then a report to the board and stakeholders. So the administration and board of Jackson would create their improvement plan that maintains their autonomy. We would then come in with a small team in cooperation and collaboration for when we schedule, et cetera, and verify that they are actually implementing their plan for improvement. And that report would go to our board. We would anticipate that later in this school year, because on November 1, you'll get the Charter Performance Report, which is what you saw last year for the first time with Legacy and with Galapagos. And then in February, we talked about that for all of these schools. And so that would continue to be done. The total cost is driven by the school code parameters, which is somewhere between 97% and 103% of the per capita tuition charge. And the estimated PCTC from the FY19 financial report you see on your screen there at just under $10,200. While the original Jackson Charter has up to 1,500 students, they have, like I said, 222 on Friday. Mr. Williams is projecting 250 in FY21, 275 in FY22, 300 students in FY23. And so the the range of financial impact to the district that you see in the executive summary is based on those enrollment projections against this estimate. It is, of course, an estimate driven by the PCTC, which changes annually, and their enrollment. We are recommending that we continue to assess the situation with you and the public through the Charter Renewal Report, which goes live on November 1 after the state lifts the embargo on their information, the annual implementation report, of course, the annual report, or I'm sorry, the Illinois Report Card, which is done annually, and then the summative score that is part of the SAA Accountability Report. Because of the school closures and the ongoing health crisis, the governor has canceled all assessments, and the Illinois State Board of Ed's waiver to the Department of Ed waives all accountability measures in FY20. And the state has said that they will not publish those in the Illinois Report Card that comes out this fall. So what I spoke with Ms. Baker and Mr. Williams the other day, and with the superintendent and Ken, and prior to that, we would use that state model. So in a sense, for all things related to SAA accountability, FY20 never happened. So FY19 would be the base point, and we would then set goals in FY21, 22, and 23 based on that, that mimics the state's plan to address the deficit on assessments and accountability measures here in FY20. The return on investment would be a comprehensive set of school services for up to 300 students at the current enrollment projections. Reporting back again, you would see the annual Charter Renewal Report in November, the annual implementation report late in the spring, the notice structure, which is attached to Board Docs, and then the ISBE documentation. Again, we went through all of that in February. It's attached to Board Docs, and we would continue to produce that annually. Okay. Thank you for that. And did I put everybody back?
Yes, I think so. Okay. Do you want to do your second presentation, or do you want to take questions now?
Why don't we take questions now? We have the team from Jackson on the line as well. And so we can be more efficient with our time.
Okay, board members, questions or comments? Just introduce yourself, because I don't think I'm going to see the hands again, the raised hand. But who would like to go first?
Ken, I can ask a question, a couple of questions.
Okay, Tim.
So the charter, current charter contract expires June 30th of this year, and you're proposing a three-year renewal. But I thought you just said, since we won't have any assessment data in the fall of 2021, you you mentioned three years. Is that taking us out three years or four years?
Sorry for being unclear. The renewal contract would only be for three years, but rather, since we won't have new accountability data based on FY20, we would use FY19 as our baseline for those reports. And then in 21, 22, and 23, you would see the data. But the renewal contract would end at the end of June 2023.
Okay. This isn't a question, this is a comment. I'll just say, I'm going to struggle to support a three-year renewal for this school based on its performance. I think we should be keeping schools like this on a much shorter leash. We talked about the performance. I don't have the school report card in front of me. That's part of the problem with these formats. But I remember making the comment when you gave the report on this school, and there's a good you can say about this. I want to know, I personally think we should do a shorter renewal, and I want to know what the what the administration is going to do to do track this, to have a backup plan. I don't like being presented with options that say, well, we have to renew because we have no other options. So given the performance of the school, and given the fact that you're recommending some renewal during a turnaround, are we going to be working to develop an alternative plan? Because it would be unworkable to simply say, we're not going to renew this, right? We don't even know where we put these kids. But is that going to be the situation every time a renewal comes up, no matter how badly somebody's performing?
From my perspective, sir, no. And I'm going to defer to the superintendent in a moment. But when we did the two-tier matrix and the notice structure, it was with the full knowledge of cabinet, it was well vetted. We worked with external partners so that there would be no surprises, and the folks had a long planning cycle. Dr. Jared has been crystal clear with charter operated schools and with our own schools that performance needed to improve. But in terms of facilities and the like, I'm going to defer.
Okay.
I think, Dr. Wolf, before I dive in, I would again like you to explain the distinction between a traditional three-year renewal and what we're actually proposing here. I think there is some nuance there, Mr. Rollins, I think is important to raise. But before Dr. Wolf goes into that, while we are fully committed to supporting the work of Jackson as they attempt to significantly improve their results over a three-year period, based on some of the early steps they've already taken, we will, of course, be on an annual basis, be monitoring performance and looking at other potential operators if that performance does not improve on an annual basis. And I believe Dr. Wolf built that into the contract here, into the renewal process, where we are supporting Jackson. But there is more than just wait till the end of three years. There is an annual process where we will be much more tightly reviewing the performance and the progress that Jackson's making. I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Wolf to explain what that looks like.
Okay, Dr. Wolf?
Thank you. So yes, every year, we would produce the reports, and this recommendation is for a timeline and the general structure. Then Ms. Goldsmith and Ms. Hoadley, along with any outside counsel, would work with ISBE people and the Jackson team to articulate the specific points into the contract language. And in the notice structure, if schools fall below certain performance letters, it triggers a notice, and we will work in a notice of potential revocation. It's already in there. We'll make sure that everybody knows about it so that it is transparent and provides worthy targets for everybody. We have only done retrospective snapshots of our charter school performance, much like our own Board of Ed governed schools. This implementation visit report is the new channel. So not only will the state have to approve Jackson's three-year improvement plan under the federal law, we then are going to monitor that. And if their performance fails to live according to thresholds, we're going to come back to you. I, one of the things that impressed us the most at the renewal site visit is how much every stakeholder group, we interviewed multiple groups of teachers, non-certified staff, parents, students, and board members. Every single one of those groups was 100% lined up behind Mr. Williams and Ms. Baker, which are wonderful ingredients to change practice. And I think that you rarely have that, which is part of the reason why we have hope and faith in their leadership. But we're going to come back to you every year. And to, in the last renewals that we did in FY19, the two schools came in with a five-year and a 10-year request for renewals. Jackson came in with three years. They knew that they needed to improve their track record with you, and they were very honest about their situation and their expectations. And I think that that is commendable, to be honest.
Any follow-up, Tim?
Let me, let me just jump in real quick. Just to be, to be clear, when we talk about the renewal with conditions, there will be an annual, there's going to be an annual implementation report, which I think will give us the chance to work together with Jackson to very closely monitor the performance each year of this three-year agreement to make sure we're staying on track. So just, I want to be clear, Mr. Rollins, that in addition to the things that Dr. Wolf said about Jackson's recognition of the need to improve, we are also not standing back for three years. We're going to be working very closely with Jackson each year as part of this, as part of the renewal process, as opposed to waiting until the end of the three-year period.
But just to be clear, so that I'm clear, you say you're going to come back to us every year, but it's not like we can cut this short and revoke the charter before the end of the three years. We will be approving the charter for three years, correct?
So yes and no. Yes, we're approving, our recommendation is for a three-year charter renewal. There is specific language in school code that allows us to revoke a charter from a charter operated school prior to the end of that term.
Based on?
On performance, contract, contractual, and academic, et cetera. And we had never before had that notice structure that included that. We do now. And giving a notice of potential revocation is one of many steps in school code to revoke that prior to the end of the renewal cycle.
I'll just say, and I'm going to repeat, you know, what Peter used to say about the lack of a sense of urgency. When you talk about three years, and you're talking about kids who, for an elementary school program, that's half of their elementary school program. And so if, at the end of three years, it turns out we don't see really much improvement, that's a pretty drastic impact on the lives of students and their ability to succeed later on in their careers. So I have a, given the performance of this school, and I don't want to say it's easy to say things are going to be better going forward, but let's just say that it's, you know, things tend not to go as well as people think they're going to. So I, I'm just going to say, I'm going to have a hard time supporting a three-year renewal for this program, given these test scores. I also want to say, we're setting a precedent here, talked about some of our own programs. So this is my expectation, is that this is what's going to come forward for some of our own programs, is three-year turnaround plans. And I think that's too long of a time. I don't think that creates a sense of urgency that I would like to see for some of these programs that are struggling or that are underperforming. That's my.
Okay, which board member would like to go next?
Ken?
Jude?
Okay. I am looking at the numbers here. 1% of students meter exceeded at Jackson in math in 2019, and it was at 3% in 2018, so they went down there. English language, 6% of students meter exceeds in 2019 versus 4% in 2018. And writing, 6.5% were classified as proficient in writing in 2019 versus 6% in 2018. And our scores are, you know, in the teens, but they're not in the single digits. So I, I have a few questions. Let me, let me ask you first. The alternative to renewal was, what was that called? Travis?
If we did not, if we do not renew, then Jackson's board would have the right to, to appeal that to an appellate authorizing body, at which point, if they were successful in that, we lose any management and collaboration rights there, but you are still on the hook, so to speak, for funding it.
But somebody else would oversee them.
Correct.
And at the end of three years, if we don't see a change, and this turnaround that they're hoping to see, will it be the same thing when we say, okay, we're not going to renew now, and then they're going to go, they'll appeal it, and we'll be in the same place three years from now that we are now?
Not under the current two-tier matrix system. We would be recommending, you know, if they were meeting their annual goals and we did not take action prior, but let's say the performance that we see in the matrix on the Charter Performance Report is, and we're close to this level, we would be recommending closure.
But they can appeal that, correct?
They could, but.
So we'd be back in the same place we are now? If we were to not approve now?
By having demonstrated a very clear and transparent process, giving them time to make improvements against annual, et cetera, we greatly strengthen our hand in any appellate decisions down the road according to data.
So it's very clear in our contract what their goals are for each of the coming years, despite the fact that we don't have a goal for 20, because we won't have those tests. I get it.
So that is very late breaking, but they will be in the contract. And, and the two-tier matrix that is attached to Board Docs already outlines what we, the performance levels that would merit the recommendation going to July 1, 2023.
And those are, and I'm not looking at those right now, when those are two-tier. So we're talking about annually, if they're not meeting their goal, we can do something or we can't do something. We have to wait till the end, as Tim said, at the end of three years.
No, we can take action annually. It just gets.
What kind of action? Be more specific.
Sure. We can send a notice of potential revocation and actually vote to revoke their charter, to close this school. Everything that the state board has told me, the time to, well, the, the best time to create an Iceland Charter School is at the creation of it. The next best time is at renewal time. It is extremely messy and injurious to students and to everybody to do that during a school year. And so yes, we can. And, and I, you know, we will make sure that every legal opportunity is available to the board.
Can, can I say to you that we've heard this before on charter schools, okay? So let me ask you this, then. The whole idea behind a charter school is they can do innovative models of teaching that we couldn't do in our system. And then these wonderful things that they do, we would be, we would then be able to put into our curriculum or our processes. What is this new and wonderful turnaround strategic plan, whatever that they have, that's going to suddenly make a difference and bring people, bring the students up from where they're at?
They are currently refining that. They have a new partner. But I'd like to let either Mr. Williams or Ms. Baker address the elements of their plan. address the elements of their plan. Like, they have been calling parents and guardians to work on the chronic absenteeism. They inked a new contract for data work, but they can be much clearer than I can for you.
Is that okay?
Good evening.
Mr. Wolf, I would just, this is Ken. I would just ask that you give a high-level overview of your, your plan.
Well, if, if I could preface that and then turn it over to Mrs. Baker, we have started a school improvement plan. And I just lost visual. Can you still hear me?
Yeah, we can, we can see you and hear you.
Okay, well, the, the school, we've been focused on school improvement long before tonight. And we have partnered with, with a couple of consultants over the past two years in order to move the school to a higher performing level. And thirdly, unfortunately, the school report card has new parameters, new goals that have been set by ISB that we're just now, this year, having to address. So it's not, we're going to start the program. We have been starting the program. One thing that we're doing, that many other schools are not doing right now, is this holding online classes for those students who, who need to be in the classroom with teachers. That's going on right now. And that's not mandated by RPS, it's not mandated by ISB. We've chosen to do that. We started that program about a week ago, when no other school was doing it. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Baker, who can give you more specifics about our school improvement plan.
I don't see.
Yeah, I don't see Mrs. Baker on my list here.
Can you hear me?
No, I can, yes.
Okay, sorry. It says Shavina Pierre. I've since been married, but my email address isn't changed, so.
I see, okay.
But your video is not on. Do you have a video?
I do, but the host would not let me show myself.
Oh, okay.
I can do that.
Jason?
Well, go ahead, then. We'll, we'll listen anyway.
Okay. Yeah, it says, it, it just gives the report that I'm not able to start the video, so I apologize. You guys would have saw me all decked out in my Panther gear. So to speak specifically to what it is that you were asking in regards to turning it around, or turning things around, we have partnered with ACRRA the same way that the school district has, so that we can be far more intentional about our data and how that then guides our instruction. What you don't see in the story with our Illinois Report Card is listed in our application, where you see students over time with us have made significant gains. I'll just report very quickly that this past school year, we've gotten a new 100 students in our classroom in transition from a K-8 building to a K-5 building. That intention was to really promote those foundational skills and work with the smaller demographic of student, which I am very, very excited about and know for, for certain that we will see gains. What's also not reported is that even the, even though the proficiency has not been met, half of our students have made significant growth in both math and reading. There is no staff or administration that is more dedicated to turning things around. And with our Illinois Empower designation of lowest performing, I will tell you, I've been with the school since its inception. And this is my third or two and a half, second and a half year as principal. And I have taken the time to make sure that we have appropriate curriculum. I've been intentional about hiring specific people to address our deficits. We met with consultants to not just do a three-year plan, but a five-year plan that will address four specific goals. Obviously, the first one being an academic goal with setting our bars of rigors that are in line with both math testing as well as park testing. The second goal is climate and culture, which we were actually able to make significant gains over the last two years. The third being our attendance. So we do have a community and family engagement specialist who is making contact with all of our families that are showing deficits with attendance, because we do know that if students aren't in school and in seats, they are not able to learn. And so to address the actual academic gaps that we have, many of our students come to us being either two or three years behind in both math and ELA. So we've been intentional about our hiring with our Illinois Empower funds to not just have tutoring available, but interventionists on staff to bridge that achievement gap. We've gone so far as to, myself even, making sure that we are teaching the whole child. We do have a social worker that is on staff with our staff to assist in all of the SEL needs that our students have, as well as being a PBIS school for behavior. The last thing I'd like to point out is our teacher evaluation system. All of my administrative staff, instructional coaches, including my Director of Curriculum and Instruction, all have been certified as Danielson Framework evaluators. And all of our teachers have a minimum of two formal observations and then two informal observations every school year. We've reorganized the structure to best serve our community and our families. We have, you know, we're home to our students and our families, and that doesn't fit the, the regular school model. Travis spoke to you guys about our climate and culture in our building. And we are the alternative with demonstrated performance for students that would be lagging or would be lost otherwise.
Can you, you referred to, I'm going to just ask for a couple of numbers. So your attendance, what is your attendance figure for last year, for this last year? Or you can give me last year and this year, your percentage? I was trying to switch over back and forth with the reports, and I didn't see it.
Student attending. Hold, I'm sorry, I'm getting, hold on. Can you see me now?
I can, yes.
Okay. Someone sent me an invite so that I could be seen. We, our daily average attendance hovers somewhere between 90 to 95% annually, with there being a slight dip in the winter months. But for statistical purposes, I haven't seen our ADA go below 89%.
And how about your mobility?
About 17%.
And how about your teacher retention?
This, this past school year was at 80%. We only filled three positions this last school year.
Okay. And 17% mobility, and you said nine, well, 95% average daily, or 88?
That's the lowest it's been, is 88. But we hover around 92 to 95%.
So.
Which has been a great increase from years past.
Right. And you're saying to us, part of the reason that you guys haven't met the, the goals that you were looking at was because you didn't have kids in the seats, and it sounds like you have kids in the seats. So let me ask another question, and this one is more of Travis and administration. Thank you so much for what you did share. You said that we can reimburse that between 97 and 107%, I believe, and that it averaged, what was it, 10,007, something like that? Was, how do we determine what we're going to reimburse?
So the school code used to be 75 to 125% of the PCTC, which is a figure calculated from the annual financial report that our finance department submits to the Illinois State Board of Ad. There are many lines that derive this PCTC number. When the state changed from general state aid to evidence-based funding, they narrowed that variance on the allowable percentage to a charter-operated school, regardless of district, to between 97 and 103%. Because we're dealing with contracts that were all written with all of our charter-operated schools prior to that change in the law, Jackson being the last one to be renegotiated under the EBF law, Ms. Yar and her team have calculated every quarter to make sure that the old methodology versus this new, what was in their contract in this range. And so I, I believe that it's been the 97% rate.
The 10,000 is about closer to the 97% rate, is that correct?
Yes, the FY19 PCTC was 10,194 and some odd cents. And so it would have been 97% of that.
Okay, thank you. Somebody else have questions?
Any other board member comments or questions?
Can I ask?
June, go ahead, June.
I am looking at the renewal application. And the one thing that stands out to me that is troublesome is, on page nine, it says there, currently, there are no anticipated changes to the JCS educational program. Does that, that, to me, that says, we think we've, we're doing pretty good. We're not changing anything. That, that concerns me.
My understanding of that, from working with the Jackson team, is they've worked hard to align the curriculum. They're not changing the curriculum. They're not suggesting adding or changing grade levels during this next renewal period. They've rearranged the school already, if you will. What they want to do is have higher levels of implementation, as Ms. Baker was talking about, and getting students to school. Last year, they had a high chronic absenteeism rate. They put together a plan, and you heard her talk about the higher average daily attendance so far this school year. Working with ACRRA, they believe they have the curriculum. They already have the formative test in place. But actually doing something week in and week out to change instruction is part of the plan now. And so I believe that that is the page nine reference.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Mr. Segal?
Thank you. Is there any difference in the actual attendance versus what's reported through the average daily attendance? It seems like with a chronic absenteeism rate of, reported at 50%, and I'm just going to go by your report of 17% in terms of mobility, that there's a lot of missed days, and a lot of missed days. Is that actually reflected in the ADA?
It, it is. And the three, so there are three looks at attendance-related factors that are indeed related, but they don't necessarily always move in lockstep together. So your ADA is the percentage of your enrolled students who are in the building of every enrollment day, right? So that allows for the fluctuation of mobility, students moving in and out. They're only counted in your building. They were enrolled 100 days, they were present 90, they have a 90% ADA. And they average that out over all students over the course of the year. Then there are two numbers. Truancy, which is a 10% threshold, or 5%, sorry. And then there's this chronic absenteeism, which is being absent for any reason, a certain number of school days, over 10%. And so you have some students who are absent lots, and some students who are absent little or none. And so your chronic absenteeism rate is a reflection of students who cross that threshold. And here's part of where they're all related, but they don't go in lockstep. As Rockford Public Schools, our chronic absenteeism rate is 10 points higher than Chicago Public Schools. But chronic truance in Chicago Public Schools far outnumber the number of chronic truance in Rockford. So it's students sitting different thresholds, and you get different looks on that. If that all makes sense.
Yeah, okay. It, it does make sense. I guess just for clarification, the, it seems like once upon a time, we were told that our average daily attendance is established in the first three months or two or three months of the school year, and then it's just that for the rest of the year. Does that still apply to us, and does it apply to the charters?
What you're referencing was how the state used to allocate general state aid. And so they're still computing your average daily attendance rate, which is over the entire school year. But general state aid took your highest three months, and that became how you earned your general state aid following year.
So I've conflated things, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Other board member questions or comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mike.
So let me ask Dr. Wolf. What, number one, if, when they talk, when the administration talked to parents, if they're aware of the numbers? And two, if they are, what is their response?
Yes, they were aware of the numbers, and they, they felt, A, that their students were being cared for by the school, and they were working with the school's administration to improve attendance, to improve achievement.
And a related line of questioning, was there a sense, either by them, meaning the parents or the administration, that outcomes would be different under different circumstances?
Yeah, I believe that all stakeholder groups at Jackson anticipated and are working towards higher proficiency and higher growth rates.
I think the tenor of my question is more, if they were to go to another school, do they think that their student would improve a great deal?
Not a single parent referenced that. In fact, what parents did reference was how the Jackson staff made their student feel accepted and cared for in the building.
Are there other factors? And I'll say upfront that the results are pretty miserable, but are there other factors that weigh in on this? We talk consistently about extracurriculars, social, emotional, and other kinds of things. Were those part of the discussions?
Yes, sir, they were. Very intentionally by the faculty and staff at Jackson. The students talked about it, and the parents talked about it. I think Ms. Fumo was the other RPS team member, and we both felt that, we heard that very strongly from them.
Was that on social, emotional, or extracurricular, or both?
Primarily on social, emotional. How the students felt going to the school, day in and day out, was their primary focus.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask, this is Jude.
Go ahead, McCullough.
Yeah. What, what is the percentage of special ed students?
I would have to reference that, and I was trying to find the attendance thing, and the Illinois report card is down. They are within a couple of percentage points of the district average.
Thank you.
Actually, this is, I've got the PDF up. If you pull a PDF up, Travis, that works. So I did go to that. So I can tell you what their percentage of. So I can tell you what their percentage of special ed is. Children with disabilities, their percentage is thirteen percent compared to a district average of seventeen point eight percent. So, so I did pull up the scores. I've been looking at it while everybody talks and, you know, I think we all remember this, but I just want to emphasize. I will concur with Mr. Connor, the results are miserable. And it's for, they're miserable for every single subgroup. Every single subgroup is underperforming the district. And, you know, this was something that I brought up during the charter presentations, performance presentations, and I don't know if we've got, if it's just a data problem, but according to the school report card, their percentage of kids who are low income is twenty percentage points below the district average. They're reporting only forty-four percent of their kids are low income compared to a district average of sixty-four percent. They're reporting a lower average than the state average. State average is forty-eight point eight percent. There's either a massive data problem there or, you know, if their, if their percentage of kids who are low income are really only forty-four percent, that really makes these results much worse. So I don't know, I don't know what it, which it is. I don't know if we've got a massive data problem, if they're not, if they're not reporting the percentage of low income kids properly. Or if they are reporting it properly, this is, this is much worse problem than you would even think looking at the numbers otherwise.
So the number of free and reduced lunch students as reported using this metric is direct certification, which is very different than the forms. The federal standard for normalizing that would be to multiply that by one point six. So a form, if we did the old form collection methodology.
Travis, as a district, we're reporting, we're not reporting.
We're doing the same.
We're, we're reporting the, the direct certs. So our percentage of kids is that our direct certs are sixty-four percent. So my question simply is the percentage of direct certs at, at Jackson, forty-four percent? Which is what's reported on the state report card?
So when the data was collected in the fall, yes, it was. And we are working with each of the charter-operated schools to get a fresh look at that. It's in their base camp. The state is re-verifying by April seventeenth. And so we're working with Mr. Barthel to get it loaded into the state system in each of the charter schools to make sure that we have the most current information. So I think it's a little bit of data and a smaller school is going to have bigger changes in percentages, but.
So right now, far as we know, the percentage of direct certs, the ghost was forty-four percent, which is lower than the state average and lower by twenty percentage points than the district average.
Mr. Rollins, the state average is not direct certification. That's our district standard.
Okay.
To make it apples to apples with the state would put it at seventy point four percent. You have to multiply that number by one point six. So they're free and reduced lunch.
That's this average then. Let's just use district average.
Yeah.
Okay, so twenty percentage points below district average. And when we look at the last available proficiency, we have six point one percent proficient on ELA compared to a district average of eighteen point nine percent. And one point four percent proficient on math compared to a district average of fourteen point two percent.
Yes, sir, those are certainly the numbers and why this is the only charter renewal recommendation with conditions.
But for three years.
With an annual review to you and potential action prior to the end of three years.
Okay. Any other board member have a comment or question?
Well, I'd be curious what the other board member, I mean, we haven't heard from Anthony and I don't know who's not here, David's. I, I'm with Tim. The numbers, you know, I, I, I don't know why we're going to have this sudden turnaround. I didn't hear anything. I know we're working with, they're working with ACR. I know they're trying to get butts in the seat, but I, it sounds like they had them there this year. Of course, they don't have the test to show for it. But those numbers are so incredibly low. I don't know that we're doing the students in our district who are attending there a service because it's, this is foundational, you know, and, and it, it is, it is hard for me to want to do any renewal, better yet, three years.
I guess, for me, this is Ken, my comment would be, I would agree. I'm concerned about that as well and I'm concerned about the sense of urgency to try to turn it around in a much faster timeframe. Anthony, you had, you were going to make a comment. Go ahead, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, I was going to say that as a board, I said, I was like, the whole board is concerned and we, we, we have just cause to be concerned. The bigger problem that I have with is that it made, it, it sounds like the administrator does not have the, they don't have the credentials or they have not made the following steps. So even if we were to deny it right now, it would probably go to an appeal and we would lose because administrator has not put in the priority steps to, for us to be able to win the appeal. So it looks like we're going to have to sign them again. But I don't, I understand the concerns as far as three years. Now, administrator, it sounds like they're trying to put in steps. So if they don't comply to the standards that we want, then we are going to be able to ever go to a appeal. So that's what I'm looking at. That's what I'm hearing. And so it's disturbing. I mean, it is, it is dreadful that some, one of our kids have to go to school and have those type of grades and those outcomes. It's, it's, it's bad. But at the end of the day, it sounds like we didn't do what we're supposed to do three years ago or five years ago. So now we put some things in place that will help us to help, put us in a better position if this happens in three years. So those are things that I, I'm, I, like you said, I really don't want to do three years, but I understand the predicament that we are in as a district and how it's going. So I hope that as we was looking over the, the contract, I hope it's tight. I hope it's, I hope you did much better. It sounds like you did much better, but I hate to be here three years from now and we're in the same boat. So I think next year, we'll see.
Any other comments for Mr. Segal or Ms. Stan?
Go ahead, Joe.
Another concern I have is what happens to these kids when they leave Jackson? They're so far behind now. They're going to come back into the district, right?
At middle school.
At middle school and they're going to be behind even our own kids.
Mr. Segal?
While I do note that there are some interesting things going on at Jackson, like the length of the elementary day, well, it's only elementary. The length of the school day has gotten a little bit longer there, incorporating some STEM into the curriculum, which I think is great. I guess, what happens if we were to say, we're not going to renew, they appeal, they lose the appeal? Then what do we do?
Then in June, those students would no longer be students at Jackson Charter School and we would be required to educate them in the fall.
Do we have a sense of where they would be educated? What schools would suddenly be hit with over capacity?
Jackson serves a population that comes from many different parts of the city.
Right.
So I don't know that it isn't just one or the other.
Yeah, I understand. But I think it would be prudent to start figuring out what's the alternative for these students because it could happen. You know, if we, if we, if we say no to this, it is possible that we could be looking for places for them to go now, maybe next year, the following year, the year after. I think we should probably be planning for how our, maybe our demographer is going to have to juggle these students. Because I guess I'm going to share a significant amount of skepticism that these sort of numbers are going to look really different in three years. And we have been told that changing our numbers in the district, two points, three points is just an absolutely monumental task. I realize a two-point change when you're down at one, you know, it may not be all that, may not be as hard. On the other hand, it just might because it seems like it's been a real slog to try and get those numbers to stop sliding down. So I guess I would be interested in knowing that the administration is already figuring out where, where do these students go on the off chance that Jackson is closed? Perhaps sooner than later.
And I think one of the reasons we're recommending, what is, we continue to talk about this like it's a hard three-year deal.
I know.
It is, is a series of three consecutive one-year contracts. It's really a sum of a three-year deal. And I think that's really important that we make this distinction. And I want to be clear that our recommendation that in the middle of the circumstances we are in, we would have made this recommendation anyways. We do not believe the best thing for the students in the school district is to make this transition right now. We believe that the best, based on our heavy analysis of spending time in the school, that that they have put eighteen months of very intensive work into turning around their school already. Otherwise, we would not have made that recommendation. They have replaced the principal. They have replaced the essentially Mr. Williams and habits, what is the superintendent role? They have turned over board members. They have shortened from a K-eight focus to a K-five focus. They have made a significant amount of investment that allowed us not to go for a five or a 10-year renewal, not even a three-year renewal like we did with our other partners. But we did see enough that we feel like we could support three consecutive one-year agreements that culminate in a three-year deal. What we would be doing to our students, no matter how spread they are, is not our recommendation because we believe that with the changes that Jackson has shown over the last eighteen months, combined with the fact that the alternative of displacing those students from our perspective is not the better option. So I just want to be clear that our recommendation is not done because we have blind faith that everything is going to immediately get better. But rather, we have a annual wait-and-see approach with, as we are stronger partners as a district with accountability and clear direction, we believe Jackson is going to get better results. I also want to point out that attainment on the state test, while an important metric, is not the only way to measure the improvement of a school. So we are, we are going to be taking all that into consideration. But I do believe that the idea of displacing students at this time would have a great deal of risk associated with it from my perspective. I wouldn't have said that if Jackson hadn't made significant changes over the last eighteen months and if our visiting team hadn't seen that commitment to improvement. I want to be clear that this is not an act of desperation on the part of administration. This is based on our analysis of what has occurred over the last eighteen months.
I understand the series, if I may jump back in, the series of one-year renewals. I, I just think it would, it's wise to do one of two things. Either just get the data ready so we know just in case, or I'm assuming that there's more than one alternative of either just continuing on with Jackson or putting the kids into the two oh five schools. And that those alternatives get considered as well.
Okay. Any other board member comments?
Yeah, if I could just say one.
Go ahead, Mr. Rollins.
You know, if it's a series of one renew, one-year renewals, the, seems to me, the thing that would put us in a stronger position would be to do a series of one-year renewals rather than do a three, three-year contract. Because my sense is that terminating a contract midstream is going to be harder than not renewing a contract. But having said that, I will say that coming back to us in a year isn't going to accomplish anything because we're not going to have any data.
Right. I say, yeah.
So, you know, I guess where, where I'm going with this is, you know, I think the most I would support would be a two-year renewal. So in two years, we'll have data. In one year, we won't have any data. But to me, waiting three years is, to me, just not acceptable.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we'll end it there and let Dr. Wolf absorb the comments and feedback and see if there's any revisions that they want to do. Okay. You're up again, Dr. Wolf, with the acceptance of the Gen Youth Fuel Up to Play grant. Oh, you're, you're muted there.
I muted myself. I'm going to share the, and where did that go? So what we're seeing with the COVID-nineteen pandemic, that a lot of places are trying to rush support to students via school districts and they are making micro grants available that are very short and very quick in the turnaround. And so this is one of those. So you see the entire application attached to this is very, very short. And what we're really asking you to do is to allow us to accept any potential award. So Renee in Nutrition Services is getting notified through a variety of vendors of those micro grants. We want to take this one to you to ask you to allow us to accept the money. The purchases was, would still need to be made to serve the students under the current situation and we're trying to chip away at the cost. And so this would be up to eighteen thousand dollars at the current distribution sites towards that end.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Dr. Wolf?
I got one.
Go ahead, Mr. Segal.
Thank you. I understand we are operating a total of eight distribution centers now. Any chance that there would be the three thousand bucks for the two additional ones?
If they become available, yes, we will do that. We, we were working on trying to get another proposal, potential grant award to you and it was happening so quickly, we didn't get that, we believe. For a while here, you'll see us asking you to accept money.
Okay. Any other board member comments or questions? Okay, these items will come back to us for action on our board meeting on April fourteenth. This is Yar, you are up.
Ken, Ken, Ken.
Go ahead.
Maybe I was muted. I'm sorry. One of the things that's listed that they would like to purchase is carts for transporting cold items like milk and the like. If, I, I still don't understand why we can't use our bus drivers and our buses to get food moving around for people who don't have, who have transportation issues. And I was told that a large reason behind that is that because we have perishables such as milk and and we could, we can't, we can't put that on buses because, because it is perishable. And so will this enable us to expand the way we distribute food by doing that? Or there is probably no consideration for that anyways at this point, right?
I'm only addressing accepting up to eighteen thousand dollars. Ms. Detman, I know, has been deeply involved in that and and I, I would not be speaking for knowledge.
I, I'll jump into that. I mean, at this point, it's actually been Mrs. Holdley that's been working closely. Mrs. Detman has been doing the paper pencil and supply coordination with Mrs. Holdley via Mr. Slife with the transportation. But in, in the case of our current strategy, at this point, we added two sites that were closer to potential areas of need to go from six to eight this week. But we've actually gone to two days a week as opposed to daily to, to try that. We are trying to actually limit contact. Obviously, if we see that food need spikes up, we're willing to explore other opportunities for distribution. But at this point, our strategy of being in eight sites is the next. i- is the next step that is being recommended by our food service team.
How would we know if the food needs spikes up when it's the people who can't get the transportation to get it? I mean, right, is your expectation that they would call the district? Is your expectation that, what, what is it? Because some of those sites.
We are not the only, we are not the only community.
Other people who are out closest to some of those people who have those needs and, and going where they are. So we're, we're open, anyone that has any other ideas or hear of anything where else, where there a need may be, we certainly want to hear that. But to Dr. Jared's point, the city and there, there, there are many other resources that are also getting information to lots of other people where there are other, there are other resources where people can go get food.
So my real question was, how do we know that we are, I, I think that's where, what I was asking is, how do we know that we're, that if there were gaps? And you're saying it's because you have your ear to the ground and you have these connections with all these others. Is it not possible to, through the schools, especially now that we're doing distance learnings, the teachers are in connection? Is it not possible to take some sort of pulse of different schools to see if they, the, the families feel they're? Because I know we've had an excess of food, we've had to take it to shelters, we are, you know, homeless, whatever. I really want to get it to our students and their families. So I, I, that's the reason I asked if there's a way that we can make sure that we are getting it to all the kids.
Yeah, our two, our two data points have been how many stu, how many families are showing up? Which I agree with you, Mrs. McCulloch, should not be our only data point because we could run the risk of families not coming. And us thinking we're doing a good job, but in reality, it's becoming. So that's where Maureen from Mr. Dotson Jr. team, as well as a number of other community partners, were in close contact throughout the city to make sure demand issues aren't rising up. That is, in fact, why we added two sites, one at Bayer Early Childhood Center, which is across the street from Blackhawk. And we also added fairgrounds to the list. So we are going to make adjustments week by week with the current deployment strategy based on both of those factors, how much food we are using. But also, when, when demand has come up, we've added sites two different times now.
Okay. Okay, Mrs. Yara, you're up next. Resolution to allow appropriations for next year to be spent early.
Yeah, this you might recall from last year was our, last year, we brought this forward and that was our first year of doing so. So what we wanted to do is issue purchasing orders for long lead time items. So a lot of times, you know, technology will take a while to get in, books, curriculum will take a while to get in, so ten to twelve weeks. So with allowing us to issue those purchase orders for those items to be received after July first, that allows us to be better ready for school, which is our goal. That along with the calendar change really allow that to happen. We did have one problem that I'll just share with you, which we received in so much information or so much product that distribution was, they, there was a bottleneck there for a little while, but we were able to get it through and out before the school started. So with our new setup for operations, that will be a problem. But with that ask of the 25% in the tentative budget, I do need to present to you the actual tentative budget so you know what that looks like right now. And as you know, I'll share this with you. But as you know, we have had quite a few assumption changes based on the pandemic in the last few weeks. So let me try to share my screen with you.
Well, before you share that, can we ask questions about this?
The resolution, sure.
Go ahead, Jude.
This is, okay, this is Jude. So you kept referring to long lead time, long lead time, long lead time. And then when I read through the resolution, it didn't actually say long lead time. Because to me, it's like, is there a number so that people know that nine weeks? If it takes nine weeks, you're considered part of the long lead time. How do you actually determine who gets to order early? And when you hit the 25%, if there's still stuff that takes 10 weeks?
Yeah, we won't hit the 25%. But we do analyze that with our lead times when we make a purchase. So when we're working with department has, we're looking, asking, how long does this take? I know furniture takes, takes 10 weeks to get in. So I know that off the top of my head because I've, you know, been involved with this for a few years now. There are several items, like Jason Barthel, when he brings forward, I said, how long is this going to take to get in? Because I need to figure out which fiscal year it's going to hit for starters. And we want to try to get it in so that way we can get it installed for our schools. The other part is having it go out. So that way that work for school construction can actually start July first. So without that.
So we did it last year, you said, what percentage did we use? Do we, you said we won't get to 25% this year, what did we get to last year?
$17 million, so very low percentage.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Go ahead with your.
Actually, that was going to be my question too. And I don't remember what percentage we used last year, but 25% would be over $100 million. Do we really put that big of a percentage on here?
We won't, but if you think about, I mean, so 75%, Mr. Siegel brought this up last year, 75% is salaries and benefits. So the other 25% is the rest of our budget. So he brought up, why are you asking for the entire budget? And we were only allowed to go through the long lead times. This is pretty standard to do the three months for the tentative budget, which is 25%. So I, we would not do that. We are only going to do it as long lead time items, just to be ready for school and to get this, get the product in.
So why don't you, why don't you ask for less then? Why, why do you need 25%? Why isn't it 15 or 10?
I could reduce it down.
Well, it just, I would see, it would be nice to reflect what we used last year and if you think you need more, but not to have an expansive number.
Okay.
I would just add briefly that in the midst of this global pandemic, there are a lot of unknowns about supply chains. And we're using the knowledge that we have, as fresh as it is, to be looking ahead at all the things that we need for the next school year. And, you know, working in advance as much as we can to be sure that our kids aren't at a disadvantage in the fall. So right now, one of the variables is impact on supply chain, which changes weekly based on the pandemic numbers.
Sure.
Good point.
Good for you, good point. Okay, Michelle, go ahead then.
All right.
I need to get back to the beginning, sorry about that. So this, our updated, we, we did present this with our revenue assumptions and our expenditure assumptions in March. So I'll just go through the changes and then the, just some other highlights that we've talked about. So the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic is unprecedented. So really from morning until late afternoon for about four or five days of stuff, this was changing rapidly. So we've made those adjustments with our assumptions so far. I need to minimize this, okay. I had to try to figure this out, I apologize. Everyone's over my slides, so I couldn't really read them. So the changes in assumption, the summary was EBF, so that's evidence-based funding. That I decreased even before the pandemic. So I decreased it by $2.7 million. And this is just the summary, so I'll do a little deeper dive in the next few slides. CPRT is corporate personal property replacement tax. Expecting a decrease there of about $6.7 million. And then the interest income that we earn also decreased that by about $1 million. So that total decrease from our original assumptions is a decrease of $10.5 million. Evidence-based funding, we have at $165 million. We think that collections, of course, will be affected too, or may be affected. Right now, we're not seeing any slow payments, but it's so early that we wouldn't really see that. I'm not really expecting a, a lot of slow payments right at this moment. Evidence-based funding, we did have an 8% increase based on the model that we are using that with evidence-based funding. So what I did to analyze where I think it would land, I looked at the old general state aid model. Plus, I also looked at the 200 million that'll be allocated versus the 350 million. Because the governor, even before the pandemic, tied the graduated income tax to funding the school formula. So I took that down even before those happened. And then with both things happening, I still think 6% is a, a good assumption at this time. And this is just the graph that shows how we were at 7, 8% increase. And now we're taking it down to a 6% increase, but it still is an increase. Property tax revenue has been flat for several years, so that's at 155 million. So not too much has changed here. Of course, when you hit a recession like we did in 2008, equalized sales value goes down. So when I looked at 2008, because that's our last recession, I looked at what happened immediately after that for 2009. So we had a slight decline of just a half a percent. So I just made that adjustment, but it really isn't a material difference. I also included the 2008, just for your reference, because that's where I'm pointing back to. So that's 155 million, you can see that's our tax levy then, that's our tax levy now, quite a few years later. And this is just the graph I'd like to show, showing where we were. So we are at, existing EAV was going up, our tax rate was falling. That coupled with us holding the flat tax levy, you know, tax rate was going down. Now with a recession, if we really hit a recession, not just temporary, but if we really hit a recession, the EAV will fall and tax rate will go up, is our expectation. I won't spend too much time on this, really, this hasn't really changed materially, but this is for your background information. The next deep dive I want to do is the corporate personal property replacement tax or CPRT. That went down quite a bit, so we're now looking at that at $20.4 million. So I'm looking, I looked at that as losing a quarter. So corporations, that assumes that this would pandemic, everything was shut down for three months, which I think is, you know, hopefully that's all it is, but that's how I determined a 25% decrease. So if corporations lost 25% of the revenue, you would expect that we would lose part of that in CPRT. We've had a shutdown, companies have had to shut down completely, reduce staff towards, because of the pandemic, are just losing revenue. This is our background on CPRT. So again, I looked at a few different things. I looked at the 25%, I thought a quarter might be lost. And then I went back to 16, fiscal year 16, and to look at 16, 18, you know, 21, it's around $20 million. 17 is at 26 million because we had an overpayment from the state. I mean, everyone did, and that's why it spiked there. But that was about $3 million, I think it was $3 million for two years that we were relieved that money recently. Of course, the Federal Reserve cut interest rates, so our investments aren't earning as much. So that's why I'm thinking that will go down a million dollars. Bonds were being called even before that happened, as the feds were dropping rates. Then our bonds that we invest in were being called. So they were callable bonds, we were doing well in investments, but, you know, they, I just had a lot of money coming in. Cash collections, I believe, will slow and we won't be able to, we won't have the cash to invest. So the Fed cut the rate by one and a half percent in the, in the past six weeks. So that's a huge amount. Previously, it was 1.75, and that's what we were earning on our money market account. And many accounts were in that range. And then our, now our current rate is 0.25%. So I thought this was interesting, just a quick look at what has happened. So March 15th, you can see is where it's dropped down to the 0.25%. And then you can see in December, January, how quickly it dropped. And then there was an emergency meeting where the Fed dropped it to the 0.25, basically zero. And this is a graph of our interest income. I, I like to look back a little bit further, so you can see in 2015 how we didn't really earn much, 16, 17. And then 18, we started to earn some, some money in investment. We started, we diversified our investments and we were able to earn a lot more money. So 2019, have a good year. And then 20, we expect to have $3 million still coming in, but now in 21, it will fall. This is our overall operating budget, so our revenue sources, it's, it's broken up by the party chart by source. So it's $464 million, and it's, it's balanced at this time. Expenditure assumptions, the only thing that we changed here, we still have the 2% increase built into the salaries, but it's now a contingency. So I'm holding it there, but as things change, it's going to change probably weekly, we'll know more by the end of the month. But right now, I just have it sitting there, really, it's a contingency at this point. All other expenditures were at the 2% increase because that's what CPI was. And then this just shows the expenditures by category or object of the 464 million, showing again, this is balanced. And now this is just tentative, so, you know, things will continue to change and be adjusted. I'll update the board as that happens, and we'll be bringing this back in May. But this is really for the resolution for us to disorder on the tentative budget. And it is a good time to update on the assumptions as well. So we do have the cabinet-approved new spends. We did incorporate some of these new spends into the district whole budget. When you see Mrs. Detman and Mr. Dr. Vosberg present a little bit later, then they're going to not have them in there because they were a new ask at that time. And this is what we have approved so far that has come forward to us. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on that because they'll go into details on this, but the overall, we're just at goal one. If it didn't align to goal one, it wasn't going to be funded. How important was it to do our business of educating students? And we came up with $2.4 million at this time. This is a budget summary that we normally present to you. And that's showing that we are meeting our policy of our fund balance policy. And we are again in a, we're in a balanced position on the right-hand side. You can see the column is there. We also include the net project or the projected net surplus or fiscal year 20. We're expecting that to be $12 million. And then we also include debt service funds and capital funds in this summary as well. So reporting back, as I mentioned, we would come back with adjustments in May. If things significantly changed because of the pandemic and what we're seeing, then I will send a board communication out. But this is where we are feeling it will land at this time. Any questions?
Okay, any board member comments or questions?
I have one.
Mrs. McCulloch?
What, so when the bonds get called, tell me, can you be, I, I don't understand how that's in the, the full impact and.
Well, if I have, if I have investments, if I have money invested in a bond and it's with another school district, so let's say, and they can now earn more money than, they don't, they don't want to pay me that money. So they can just call it, there's a, there's a clause in there that says this is callable at one year, or two years, or three years, and you can bump up the interest rate. So they're just deciding that they're going to pay us off early, basically. It's money that we basically loaned to them and they're going to pay it off early with us. So now I have, as soon as I would invest like $2 million, $4 million, it was getting called. So it was very, very spend crazy for the past, that was probably happening for the podcast six weeks, where a lot of things were called. So you see that in your investment summary, when we present that, you'll see movement there. I'm moving investments over to Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund has a better rate now than our Associated Bank. So I'm moving money over at $10 million at a time over there right now to get the best rate for the district. And then keeping our cash, because if our cash doesn't come in, we need to be able to still make our 40 million. We have 40 million roughly every single month in expenditures. So right now, I have $120 million sitting in a very liquid money market, so we can access that if we have to. So we're in a good position as far as cash goes as well. There are a lot of municipalities and districts right now that are selling their investments, probably at a loss. There are a lot of municipalities and districts right now that are selling their investments probably at a loss to get cash.
But that, yeah, that 120 is our reserve, but it's just how you haven't invested, or is this something different?
Well, we talk about fund balance, but you can have fund balance, and you can have your, you can meet your, your threshold of the 25%. And you could still have it where you don't have access to the cash because you've invested it all.
Right.
That you would need it. So there are a lot of organizations in that exact predicament, where they are having to make a decision what they're going to liquidate in order to make the bills if, if funding is low, which we are.
So what percentage of our 25% of reserve, what percentage of that can you recall quickly? Are you used a different term, I apologize, can you liquidate?
120 million. I have $120 million sitting in a cash account or a money market account right now.
Got it, okay, thank you. And my other question is, on that list of needed, the money we want to spend next year, it's the least expensive, but I just wanted to know what the job was. What does a textbook technician do?
Oh, he's checking into textbooks at distribution. So Steve Christopoe needs someone to help him with all the textbooks that come in in the summertime. And it really is a full-time job, so it's just to do the inventory and not, not just because it's really important, but that's what that position is.
Well, maybe if we get really good at this online thing, we won't need as many.
Yeah, I think Mrs. Detman would probably still want some textbooks.
Thank you.
Any other board members that have questions or comments for Michelle?
This is, this, this is Tim. So, you know, I understand we're in the early stages here, so this is all sort of speculative. But I understand what you're doing with the reductions in potential revenue sources. But wasn't there a headline in the paper today that we're getting over $11 million in federal funds?
Yeah, that, that 11, I did not put that in here. We don't know enough about it, and really, it'll be for one-time spends. So it'll be, you know, basically like the R money or error money, however you want to pronounce that, from, you know, during that stimulus time, that was for one-time spends. And so we are spending that on technology. So we are, we're spending that on computers.
Is that, is any of that expenditures that we would have had in the budget anyway?
Well, that'll be for fiscal year 20, so no, it was not.
We're going to spend $11?
We do have a million and a half that we were going to lease, so I'm kind of stealing Jason's thunder here. And this is just the order that it, there wasn't really a good order to do this. I really wanted them to speak to it first, but because of the resolution, I needed to speak to it. But we do, we were going to lease computers at 1.5 million roughly. But what I, because of this money coming through, and now we can purchase them with this grant money, we can, what I propose is us self-funding basically our lease payments. Because what you do with your lease payments guarantees that whoever's sitting in our chairs will continue to invest in technology and it won't get outdated. So that's one benefit of a lease. So what I propose is we act like we're paying the lease payments. We have it in our budget, we roll it from year to year. And so at the end of three years, we can make a decision, do we lease it? Or do we fund, self-fund it ourselves, you know, funded ourselves? So right now, we have it in the million and a half sitting in the budget for fiscal year 21, that you'll see a little bit later when Mrs. Detman presents. And then we do have, we have that purchase in our projections for fiscal year 20.
But I guess the larger question was, what I heard you say, that entire $11 million is on one-time spends for technology?
No, that one-time spend. In 19, so it's not, like, we're not going to get it every year.
Mr. Rollins, we, we'll bring a full plan to the board once we get more information about how we're going to spend the dollars. Technology is one of the things that's allowable and probably going to be necessary because of the significant rollout that the crisis is causing. Other things could be funding ongoing operations. We may look at an expanded summer school to make up for learning loss. This is really premature for us to speculate without a lot more board input on how we will spend the dollars. But Mrs. Yar is correct that I've, that she and the team have been working closely to look at what is the best way to make a technology investment, which we do believe is a likely outcome. It will not be the full $11 million. One other thing to take and keep in mind is that, like Title I money, some of these dollars will not go to the district. Some of these dollars will flow through the district to our private schools in the region, which is what happens with Title I dollars, won't be a big chunk of the money. So we will get back, once four to six weeks is probably what we're anticipating, get more information on that. And as we map all of this out, this one-time spend that will flow in somewhere into FY '20 and '21 will be something we'll report much more, in much more detail at a later date. This is just to introduce that concept.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Very good, well, these items will come back to us on the 14th for action. So now we're going to get a report on the budget update. And I'm not sure who's doing that, probably it's a tag team.
Yeah, we have, we have the amended budget for 1920 yet.
Okay, all right, go ahead with that, Michelle.
Okay, sorry about that. So we did, we talked about this when we went to bring the public hearing forward. This is just the cleanup, I talked about that. It's really just a budget amendment to clean up the accounts, so we have the budget resolution. It's, that's really what it is, it doesn't change anything, it's just, it's just cleanup. So, but that will be coming forward as well.
Okay. Any questions on that or comments? All right, now we're ready for our report.
So.
Dr. Vosberg, are you going first?
No, he did, he decided to defer to me, so Ed Services. And so if someone could make me the host, I think that's Jason maybe, then I will share my screen. Thank you.
I'm hearing.
Okay. Sorry, pardon, get to the right place. Okay, here we go. So I'm going to start with the Ed Services Division, but then I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Barthel, who will finish with Technology Services. Because while it's under the umbrella of Ed Services, it's, it is its own unique department. So he's going to take the lead there. As you know, we represent Goals 1 and 4 of the Strategic Plan Strategies 1, 2, 4, and 5. We are all about growth and achievement, technology, and high-quality workforce. And so to begin assessing the situation, here's who we are. Ed Services Division is made up of multiple departments. It includes our new Executive Director of Curriculum, Ben Epperson, leading K-12 Curriculum and Assessment. Bridget French, who's the Executive Director of College and Career Readiness. Kim Nelson, Executive Director of Early Childhood. Jen Lawrence, ED over Special Education. Misael Nasimento over Bilingual. Mr. Barthel over Technology. Dr. Wolf over Improvement and Innovation. And then just this spring, we
Wow. Does anybody else have acorn-sized hail coming down on their roofs?
Not yet.
I'm hoping you're all really well insured.
Oh my gosh.
We're expecting.
Dude, I do, it looks like snow.
Is it a feeling of impending doom?
It hasn't been the last six weeks.
We're just getting rain here.
No, this is like, like Jeff just got me some, and it's like acorn-sized.
Wow. I can hear it. Go ahead, Heidi.
Okay, thank you. So here are some highlights of our work over the course of the last year and moving forward. In our Curriculum Department, for the last five years, I've been reporting on curriculum leadership teams. We're now shifting into feedback teams to improve implementation, now that we're in the continuous improvement phase of much of our curriculum design. We are also rolling all the way up to grade 11 and then 12, so we're nearly finished with our full comprehensive. We've also moved the Director of MTSS position and that work under the umbrella of K-12 Curriculum to be more inclusive, ensure that we're creating more and then finally creating a balanced framework for highlights for College and Career Readiness focus on increasing opportunities for students through the lens of equity. That includes dual credit, engaging curriculum through things like incubator, and then having early college credit opportunities such as Running Start, Senior Semester in Engineering, and Articulated Credit and PLTW, which stands for Project Lead the Way Third-Year Courses. To continue with College and Career Readiness, they're also focusing on expanded partnerships. We added Ready to Learn under this umbrella of partnerships, which as you know, is the partnership between the Erickson Institute, Transform Rockford, Alignment Rockford, and dozens of other community partners. We are also continuing our partnership with Habitat for Humanity and building a second, a second home. And then also with the Rockford Police Department, using their personnel as teachers in our classrooms. And then of course, adding UIC College of Medicine Student Mentorship Program. And then celebrating that we launched the Rockford Bell Credit Union, which opened their branch at Guilford High School this year. In Early Childhood, some highlights include their programming prenatal to five. We opened preschool classrooms at Roosevelt to support education and the child development pathway. So we are supporting students who are also parents, and then also students who are seeking careers in early childhood care. And so we're able to kind of wrap all of that together into one program. It's been a tremendous collaboration. And then of course, we exceeded our FY '19 state target for inclusion of special education students. And Mrs. Nelson reported on that at the Early Childhood Report last month. And of course, providing wraparound supports for schools with itinerant and resource staff. In Special Education, we are serving more students in a least restrictive environment, which is a celebration. And another celebration is retention of teachers. In our ED program, we retained eight out of nine. Our Autism Program was 10 of 13, and our Intellectual Disability Program, 21 of 25. If you recall a few presentations ago, when we launched our curriculum for our Autism Program, one of our goals was teacher retention, and you can see that that has improved. We've also increased our fill rate for related service positions, which includes psychologists, social workers, and speech-language pathologists. And moving into next year, 15 elementary schools will have a one-to-one social work model for school year 21, and we're pretty excited about that. In the Bilingual Department, you know that we have been working on curriculum alignment with our contracted support through La Pari Dade. And we also increased the number of ESL-certified teachers to 78. And there is an ESL teacher now in every building across our district, which is notable because in the past, we had to send the students to the service, and now we're able to send the service to the students, which means that when you move into a neighborhood where you intend to attend school, we can, we can ensure that that happens for you. Also, we'll be bringing forward next board meeting, Spanish foundational literacy materials for TBE students, which supports the bridge between Spanish and English in their phonetic instruction. And then this year, we had hoped, and I'm not sure what the future of this is at the moment, to offer the seal of biliteracy to our students. So we will be problem-solving that in these ever-changing circumstances. In our Grants Department, we continue to have a focus on assessments for learning, which includes NWEA and the PSAT suite, in addition to ISA and ACT as well. They focus on, as you know, supplemental funding, programming, resources, and personnel, which includes the 21st Century Learning Program, teacher development and support, and as you are intimately familiar, the Charter Accountability Framework. Our Accountability Department is new to our team, and we're really excited to expand our team and welcome them in. Their, their goals include monitoring the school scorecard, district-wide systems of alignment for goals, engagement and parent surveys, and our newest work in monitoring PDSA's and really launching academic return on investment, which we're excited to do as soon as we're able to get back to business as usual. So our solution, I'm sure everyone is ready for just a tiny bit of business as usual. You can see an overview of our budget. This includes everything except for technology, and Jason will take the reins here in a moment. But you can see our, our largest expenditure is salary and benefits. We have a slight decrease in purchased services, a slight decrease in supplies, a slight decrease in non-capital, and an increase in other miscellaneous. And as the, the line suggests, it's a accumulation across 21 locations in other miscellaneous. There's no one large there. But you can see our total without grants is a modest increase. 7 million total, and total without grants is a decrease of 4 million. I won't read through these line, you have these documents. These
Uh oh, we're losing you, Heidi.
Curriculum are a little tricky.
We lost you for a minute there, Heidi.
But I love the Frank Zappa sound effects.
Yeah, that's right.
Am I back?
You're back.
Yeah, I think you're back now, yep.
I can only, my second hotspot, I'm trying, so. Here we go. So on the curriculum contracts, these really, they're contracts because of the professional learning and the digital software component that go along with them. So you're not going to see necessarily continuity year over year, depending on whether it was a new purchase or a maintenance of a subscription. So I'm going to go through those relatively quickly, you have seen all of them before. There will be new contracts in FY '21, and at this point, they are estimates. So if you need me to scroll more slowly through these, please let me know, but I don't want to belabor the point. It is an extensive list. And I would suppose if I were to make a headline for these slides, it would be that you can see, we discussed this a few times, that now we're seeing a downward trajectory in our spending on instructional resources. We peaked in the middle of our curriculum design work, and now we'll see that start to be regulated down to our kind of predictable annual expenditure. For College and Career Readiness, they have just a few contracts. Uncharted Learning, which is for incubator, Rock Valley for Running Start, and Rock Valley for Dual Credit Enrollment. That increase for Rock Valley is due to an increase in tuition cost. In Early Childhood, we remain flat every year, as our grant funding remains flat as well. In Special Education, we're down slightly of a $7.6 million budget, down about $250,000. Most of that has to do with therapeutic day. And again, these are based on estimates, looking at longitudinal enrollment. And in bilingual, we have a slight decrease in the contracts. Most of that has to do with kind of a wind down of our ESL cohort, which has been going, I believe, for four years, definitely three. In Improvement and Innovation, we're coming in flat. They're the same testing services every year. And in Accountability, which is our new department, there's a slight increase for K-12 Insight. We do have a few FY '21 new requests. Those include adding to our small army of curriculum implementation leaders by adding 38. Those are to support new curriculum that are rolling out in our secondary schools. A bilingual data specialist, the number of our language learners has been growing steadily over the last several years. We're now up to 5,000, putting an increased demand on the services of the bilingual department. And we're proposing a Director of Counseling. We are finalizing those plans now that would support efforts in post-secondary opportunities and to lead our counseling department. And then also a request for strategic planning dollars as we begin that massive project soon. And so in what do we get as a return on investment for these dollars? Our goal as an entire team across those seven, eight now, unique departments, is to offer dynamic but coordinated services to schools, and also to support a technology infrastructure that protects and also to support a technology infrastructure that protects our assets and enriches education. And I think this year has maybe been the most trying year for both of those goals. And if I could, I would add one highlight hot off the presses, which is designing at-home learning, distance learning, and now remote learning over the course of the last month, and deploying that technology out to students to support their learning. So I will stop here, and I will hand it over to Mr. Barthel.
Okay, bear with me. I'm going to get my screen pulled up here in just a moment. I actually did lose power here for a few moments and had some golf ball-sized hail, so I'll be interested to look at my car here in a few minutes. Get the screen back here. So I'll be sharing the Technology Services preliminary budget from fiscal year 21. Our goal is goal three, optimal climate with facilities and technology as the strategy. A few of the highlights from this year. Enhanced IT security was a big one for us with internal perimeter, user and backup work that we did, as well as redundancy and disaster recovery, and working at securing our network and making sure we're safe going forward in working in current technology and doing so. We actually adopted a device refresh plan for our Windows computers, which are 5,038 computers this year, which you saw a few months ago come through. It's the first time we've ever done that for our Windows computers. And it's a refresh that we'll have in place here going forward, so we don't become outdated with any of our technology on the end-user side again. We also worked this year at identifying and increasing a foundation device availability to, for equity from a point five, for a point five to one. And that will, specifically of interest and of importance for our schools that don't receive Title I funding to make sure that they're going to get the devices they need as well. And also this year, we supported 10 new digital student software rollouts, and we also supported some district initiatives as well. From a student perspective, things like CSO, Math Type, IXL, and NearPod. And then from a district perspective, some of the district mandated training platforms that HR is rolling out, as well as a new performance evaluation platform. So unlike the rest of the Ed Services budget, we did have an increase. And as you'll notice, we have a fiscal year 20 original budget and our adjusted budget from this year. Now I'll talk a little bit through that. That increase from the fiscal year 20 original to the adjusted is about $1.4 million. And that increase, $1.1 million of that was a Fund 20 transfer from operations budget because it covers our telephone and our internet services. So we picked that budget up here in July of 2019 since the IT department manages those contracts. It just made sense to live in one location. The additional $365,000 of that increase was enhancements in IT security contracts and different purchases for that. Things like $140,000 for our multi-factor authentication for our users to keep us safe, some storage increases for our hard drive space to be able to have more backups and have them hourly on some of our critical business systems. And another about $70,000 for some redundant hosted services for some of those critical business systems as well. From fiscal year 20 adjusted to 21, you'll see an increase as well of about $2.1 million. From the original fiscal year 20 to 21, it's actually an increase of about $3.5 million. Again, $1.1 million of that is the Fund 20 telephone budget that we picked up from the operations crew. $1.1 million of that is computer leases from that 5,038 computers. We're entering year two of three on that. And $825,000, which is out of our Fund 80, which is for risk mitigation and IT security, where we've added several different initiatives to ensure the safety and integrity of our network infrastructure for the district, including things like perimeter, internal email security, which is ongoing, which will continue to support our disaster recovery, some network redundancy, and several cybersecurity monitoring systems that we have in place now. So we have a deeper lens into our network, so we know what's going on at all times. What you'll see as well is a variance for salaries and benefits of $639,000. We did, we had several positions, 12 positions that were 20% funded, one that was 11% funded, and actually four positions that were 100% funded out of grant dollars. We actually rolled those dollars into Fund 10 this year, which equated about $542,000 of that variance. So we took that on in our Fund 10 budget this year. We had some increases of about $55,000 this year because of the information and reports we got back from the GALLER compensation study that we conducted for the IT department, and making sure we're making appropriate adjustments for some of those staff, so we're competitive. And then we had a little bit of an overtime increase for next year as well, of about $20,000 to ensure we have proper support when we need it. These are several of our contracts that we have. Many of these are ongoing on an annual basis. And as you'll see with most software contracts, specifically on the IT side, we figure in about a 3% increase overall on that, on those contracts on an annual basis. Specifically, if you look at the top one, which is Smart Net, which is for Cisco products, we continue to add additional switches and things like that to our network. So we want to make sure we're maintaining the software for those. One of the things you'll see in here is the IT security agreements, the various agreements we increased, which is a $45,000 increase to address our network needs and to ensure we're safe going forward. And then we had a slight decrease on decision at our data warehouse. And we had a few decreases. The AT&amp;T contract at the bottom here, which was an ongoing contract, where we knew that for two years, just a couple of board meetings ago, and we saw a decrease on that as well. And these are just more contracts that we have ongoing every year at Power School. We actually finished up our fiscal year, if you look at the KS State Bank, which was our foundation Chromebook lease of $175,000 a year for 1,710 Chromebooks. This was our first Chromebook lease, our foundation lease from fiscal year 2017, which completed this past year. And we do have one fiscal year 21 request. Ms. Yar alluded to this earlier, where we're self-funding ourselves for Chromebook iPad for students as we look at replacing and introducing some additional devices going forward for the district. Again, return on investment, technology infrastructure, protect our assets and enrich education. As we saw this year, the importance to protect that stuff, all of our systems is significant, and we need to continue to invest in IT security to ensure that we keep a system up and running, and it's safe for students and our staff. At this time, I'll take questions.
Okay. Board members have comments or questions on anything that Heidi or Jason presented? Tim, you want to go first?
Sure. So a comment followed by question. So the comment is, you know, I've made this comment before, that if you want to know an organization's priorities, you look at its budget. Our priority, we said, is we need to improve outcomes, and we need to improve particularly test scores. And I've made the comment that, you know, we continue to eliminate excuses. And I'm sort of down to, I've made this comment before, about ensure high-level, grade-level instruction going on in every classroom throughout the district. So we're being presented tonight with the two most important parts of the budget, because these are the two parts of the budget that are the only possible budget, piece of the budget, really have a direct impact on what we say is our whole priority. So, you know, Dr. Vosberg can be thinking about this. Mrs. Detman has a little less time. So my question is, what can you point to in your budget for this coming year that tracks that board priority of increasing student achievement?
I think there's a few things that I could point to in our budget, and I apologize if I'm slightly distracted. The storm has now moved to Cherry Valley, and I have a couple of scared boys next to me. So there's a few things that I could point to. First is that increase in curriculum implementation leaders. That is our strategy for ensuring that curriculum is being deployed equitably across the district. And by equitably, I mean that we're focused on grade-level standards, high-quality feedback. Another thing that I would point to is their work, the curriculum department's work in partnership with those curriculum implementation leaders on the balanced assessment system. That is really how we can monitor unit by unit, all the way up to and in alignment with our standardized tests, so that we have better data closer to the classroom in order to guide our decisions. And so that's really a focus for our work right now, and that's where a lot of those dollars are going. I would also add, in terms of equity of instruction, the focus on the dollars focused for bilingual, having that foundational literacy program in place, which would also provide consistency across our district in all the TBE classrooms. And I would also point to the work in curriculum. It doesn't get more real than right here. Pointing to the work in curriculum for our language learners. Pointing to the work in our curriculum work with La Pari Dada. And that will impact all of our language learner classrooms as well. When I think about, through the lens of equity again, and ensuring that students have the tools that they need to be successful, I think this crisis has really taught us how important technology is, and that it's not something that is extra or above and beyond, but instead it's a tool that really all students and teachers need access to in order to stay connected and be sure that we're giving all students an opportunity to engage deeply and richly with the curriculum. However, it is just the tool. We're getting the opportunity right now to have some of that deep professional development, because everyone is learning it right now together. Kids are learning it, and teachers are learning it. And I think you can see by increasing our foundation level to point five to one, and even in the investment with the 14,000 devices, we're putting a lot of money into technology. But we know that we're going to have to continue to support through the curriculum implementation leaders, integrating that technology meaningfully into classroom instruction. So, you know, Mr. Rollins, we've had this conversation over the last few years, and the focus remains the same. Grade-level instruction, then high-quality data, and ensuring that that curriculum is being implemented in our classrooms across the district. That was the purpose in designing it. So we're moving out of that design phase now into the curriculum implementation phase, and we have some pretty significant dollars attached to that.
Can you explain again what those CILs are, the curriculum implementation leaders? Aren't the teachers that are given a stipend?
Yes, they're full-time teachers, they're teaching five, and they are working really closely with the curriculum dean. We consider them sort of the instructional brain trust of the school. So they're getting hands-on and job-embedded professional development with our curriculum deans. We're asking them to be highly developed in assessment literacy. We're also asking them to take some risks and be model classrooms. We're asking them to lead lesson studies with their colleagues and be the PLC leader. It's a big lift, and we've learned over the last year or so what is really working for them and where we need to adjust our approach a little bit. And what we've heard from them is simply streamlining their duties and kind of clarifying, you know, the priorities of their role, because they're still teaching five classes a day as well.
So there is a CIL in every single school?
Almost, almost. There's a couple where we weren't able to fill the position because we weren't able to select the right-fit candidate. But I would say we're very close to having a CIL in every school for every core content area. I'm sorry, every course. The fine arts, we do something a little bit different. We have zone CILs, because many of them are singletons in their schools.
So you have a CIL for every content area, different. So at the secondary school level, there's a different CIL for every content area?
There's a different CIL for every course. Though freshman English has a curriculum implementation leader, because they need to eat, sleep, and breathe the freshman English curriculum and be a leader in that area. There's another one for biology, there's another one for integrated math one, another for global studies. So for each of these new courses, we've identified one person in each school who will really be that liaison between the central office and the school. We need to know in this phase of continuous improvement what works in the curriculum and what needs to be adjusted. And there are, there are link.
And when did we start doing that?
We started doing that two years ago. Two years? I think two years ago. And we began. No, we didn't do that two years ago. He doesn't recall. We started that two years ago. This is our second full year of implementation, and it's been not a year without challenge for them.
Other board member comments or questions? I have one for you, Heidi. Your new request for a director of counselors. How many counselors do we have now? And who do they, don't they report to the principals? So you're going to change that structure? Is that what you're going to do?
They do report to their principal. We'd be looking at a dual reporting structure, similar to what we do with the academy coaches. What we know, time over time, is that counselors as a group, they have such a specific job and a specific skill set that they need some additional support that's really targeted to their needs. Their job is rather expansive. They do everything from supporting students looking for, you know, post-secondary options like the military or career, to social-emotional groups, to, you know, financial aid. And so their skill set and their job is a little bit unique. And we've been a couple of years now without a support in the central office, and we feel at this time that it's needed.
Okay. Other board member questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. I guess that went well then, okay. Laura, do we have any public speakers for tonight?
We don't, but doesn't Dr. Vosberg have to make his presentation? Sorry, Matt.
He told me he didn't want to, okay.
And us West Warriors stick together, I like that.
That's right.
All right, let me share my screen.
All righty.
And sensing that Mr. Scavano is ready to end meeting.
Okay.
I will go as quick as possible, Mr. Scavano. Okay, does everyone see my PowerPoint?
Got it.
All right. You know, I hope everyone's doing well, hope your families are well. This is really unprecedented times. And from a school district's perspective, we started the year with a virus that wiped out technology, and we're beginning, ending the year with a virus that makes us totally dependent on technology. So it's really been one bizarre year, year for everybody, but everybody's stepping up and working hard. My presentation tonight, I'll try to be brief. I know we're getting late in the night here. Three goals are our focus, goal one, goal three, goal four. And the departments I oversee are the Schools Department, which is, which are the schools and their principals and assistant principals, and the executive directors that supervise principals. And the executive director of Continuous Improvement, Fumo, she's part of the Schools team. Specials, Special Programs, Heather Saltis and her work. SSAL, that's Angela H. Carter. That's Student Services, Alternative Learning. Fine Arts, that's Bonnie Spurling. I don't know if anyone heard the news today, but we had great news that Bonnie and the Arts Team throughout the district was recognized by the National Association of Music Merchants. It's a philanthropic organization based in California. We've been selected, and you hear more about this in the media, hopefully, as one of the best communities for music education in the country.
Wonderful.
Outstanding news, right. And then finally, Athletics, that's Matt Parker, and he works closely with the high schools and middle schools. And then finally athletics, that's Matt Parker and he works closely with the high schools and middle schools and elementary schools with their athletics. This org chart will, will be revised in July. As you know, we added, we added a position back. It wasn't an add to the budget because we had a vacancy that we did not fill for multiple years. We, we are adding another team member, Maurice Davis, the principal at West. He will take on some leadership of schools as an executive director of schools, middle schools and elementary schools. And we're still vetting out what the org chart will look like, but we'll make those changes by July 1st. Michelle Yar talked a little bit earlier about evidence-based funding and increases we've been seeing through the state. We spend, we've been real intentional with professional development with our principals for about a year now. Working with our contractor, DMG, district manager group on strategic budgeting, using data to create a theory of action. Most principals have probably participated in eight to 10 either group sessions or individual sessions with DMG. Help them align their budgets to Mr. Rollins' point. Your budgeting does establish your priorities for student achievement. And we're letting our schools with some really good external support, use that new funding to solve problems at the building level. We have an increase since 2019. We see a $4.4 million increase in funding at the, at the building level, student-based on our evidence-based funding from the state. You can see a break by funding source, how we break that out. Title one, there's a carryover in FY 20, otherwise that's pretty stable. By the way, my lights just flickered, so hopefully I don't lose power in the storm here.
Okay.
And then 1,003A is also grant money that's been in our budget for the last two years. And has provided some more opportunities for schools to support students. Here's a pie chart showing you the flexibility that schools have with school-based dollars that they have some opportunities to use for school improvement efforts. Again, the biggest piece of this is title one and then 1,003A, which is also federal grant money. And we have our incentives that we used Haskell Elementary School and the work they did to, to be innovative and innovation grant. Equity money that we are using to balance out the disparity we see in schools mainly based on staffing. And, and we know that our higher poverty schools have younger, less experienced teachers. And we're trying to balance out the funding with this formula. We did a flat per student increase as well. It's almost $4 million in and of itself across the district. And then our poverty tier, we have two tiers that we look at and divided the money based on the poverty rates of the schools. Higher poverty schools are receiving more money than low poverty schools. I just wanted to share an example. This, this is white, no, I'm sorry, Westview. Just to get a, a picture of what a school budget looks like, the dollar amount we're talking about and what you're seeing year over year and changes. Elementary school, this is a typical sized elementary school. So you see that their budget is about three and a half million dollars. And a big chunk of that is obviously salaries and benefits. That's the biggest piece for them. Middle school, and this is Flint Middle School. You see, this is about a seven and a half million dollar operation. And again, the, the bulk of their expenses are in salary and benefits, the personnel. High school, and these are fun 10, this is fun 10 money by the way. High school, you're looking at about $14 million operation for high schools. I think this is Jefferson High School. The high schools are very similar in size, so the budgets are very similar. But I just wanted to put some context into the work that we do at the building level and the dollar amounts we're looking at. So in total, in our schools, school-based budgets, it's over $200 million, which is over half of our budget or about half of our budget. And it's a significant amount. Again, I think board members have mentioned this in the past, we are in the people business and you can see it illustrated here with this slide. Major investment in people. Here you see my budget, pretty stable, slight variance based on adjustments. We are moving line items around. You've already approved these new requests and that's what, where the line items were moved. You've already approved the new request for NIU contract. And that's to prepare our future principals. And that's, that's a two-year contract, but this is the one-year amount, $168,000 is the one-year amount. We hope to have, this was approved by cabinet, we're still working out the details, but we hope to have three true residents in this program. We're doing this a little differently, as I mentioned in the past. We're aligning the, the participants in the program and the master's program are going to fill existing vacancies, except for these three positions. We hope that these three positions are in addition to the staffing needs of a building, essentially in an extra assistant principal. It's not technically certified yet, so we're going to call him a dean or her a dean. And we're working with HR to make sure we have a, a solid rationale, a data-driven decision. As you can imagine, the principals are aware of this and all 41 principals have a good rationale to get an additional position. But we only have three. So we're going to work real hard to make sure we're equitable, we're data-driven to hit the schools with the biggest need with these three positions. IPA mentoring contract, you'll see in the summer, it'll, it'll appear as a reoccurring contract. As we've done, worked with them this year for mentoring our first-year principals and assistant principals. And we'll continue to expand on that as part of the NIU program. Okay, student services, alternative learning, this is Angela H. Carter's department. And there's no new expenses here. You can see these are the major programs that she supports. A lot of the work that she does is around the social emotional learning for students. She does have three, if you look at her budget, she does have three significant contracts. They're either put into other miscellaneous or purchase services column or row. That's the ombudsman contract, which is over a million dollars and the YSN contract, which is over a million dollars. Those contracts are typically three years. Ombudsman will expire at the end of the 21 school year and YSN will expire at the end of the 22 school year. YSN is Services Network if you're new to the board. All right, special programs and Heather Saltis, her work, she's working hard. We have five special programs and she works hard to make sure their curriculum is different and differentiated, which requires training for teachers and professional development. There's also differentiated materials that encompass her budget. There's a lottery system, there's testing involved. So that's the bulk of her budget. She does also, if you look at the variance, a big part of the variance is stipends. She's added some stipends to support the capital program at West and Auburn. This, this is a position that's also moved from being a director to an executive director position as well. But the net variance is $17,000 in her budget. Fine arts, this is Bonnie Spurling and as I mentioned earlier, another accolade for her department. And she's had many in the past, doing a phenomenal job, not just with growing the arts programs and making sure we have high-quality programs, but also very, you, you've seen the presentation in the past, very diligent with monitoring the equipment and keeping track of instruments and really centralizing inventory system. So really great things happening in her department. And see the, the participation rate in her department continues to grow for students, which is outstanding. Her budget actually has a negative variance, so we're coming in a little below last year. She has an assistant that works with her, it's a new, a new person, similar position with just less experience than the previous person. So she has two new requests that are pending approval. And the first one is based on this growth in enrollment in the programs, we need more equipment for students. We're talking about furniture like chairs and standards and lockers for instruments and things like that. And then also Auburn's theater needs upgrades to match what we've done at the other three high schools. Our district as well, done a lot of good, Matt Parker, seeing maybe in the past, keeps tasks of a first and 20 years accomplishment list. That it's quite impressive. State level and comparable awards or recognitions that haven't happened, haven't happened in our athletics programs. He also, you may not, also receive esports and robotics. Fortunately, or look at it, esports is where I can continue to participate right now. And they are, had some success with Guilford this year, winning a state championship. We were one of the, we were the first district in the state to start esports programs, so we're very proud of that. And we have multiple students earning scholarships now through the esports. You can see their participation rate increasing as well. Here is the budget. The largest piece of his contract is ambulance services for our football games. And then the medical, medical support, medical trainers that we have through OSF also are significant costs to keep our student athletes safe. All right, I hope I didn't rush through that too quickly. We do have time for questions, but again, our focus is professional growth, retaining quality staff, extracurricular programming, safe learning environments and special programs and all of this always aligns to goal one, making sure that students have an opportunity to grow and achieve. Thank you very much and I'll take any questions.
Alrighty. Any board members with comments or questions for Dr. Vosberg?
No, go ahead Jude.
No, it's, it's that principal pipeline, you said you're going to be bringing it to us down the road anyways, the 300,000. I, I don't understand what it is. I mean, are we bringing them in and having some sort of contract with them that they will stay with the district for a certain period of time? Or what is the, or should we just wait until you present that?
Okay, very good question. The $300,000 is what we would spend if, so right now we, so we selected 10 people this week to be in the program. And we already have, we have some central office people participating. And we have three, three people that are in buildings serving as deans that are going to be in this program.
This is the NIU program.
Yes, this is NIU master's program. So the, the $300,000 is, and we, we, the cabinet is verbally agreed to this, but obviously with, with the state funding and things like that, we're, we're, we know that we have to be cognizant of that. So these are add-on positions. So you would approve them one at a time in, in closed session and they, you, they would appear as deans. But we would, you know, obviously explain to you, this is actually an extra position at school. And I don't even give an example enough, I don't want to get anyone's hopes up. But at school A, they're going to get an extra position, which will be this, this resident that we're talking about. And we, we hope to do three of those pending our financial outlook. We know that's a big investment, but we think.
So the answer, but that's not the question. The question is, so are these part of the, I guess I didn't ask. Are they part of this NIU program? And my real question beside that was, so what do they owe us for allowing them the opportunity to have these positions? Is there some sort of?
So, so, okay, so maybe this will, so that we picked, we had 35 applicants and we picked 10. And we have a total of 18 because we already have eight that are in the program that are already placed either in a central office position or in, in a building. Okay, we have, we have a dean at Guilford, we have one at Kennedy and we have one at Marshall Elementary School. So they're going to be in the program. We just picked 10 new people that are going to be in the program and they're going to fill. We have six existing vacancies right now for assistant principals. And they're going to, six of the 10 are going to go there. And we anticipate based on past history, we'll have a full 10 openings and they're going to go into those positions. These three that I'm talking about tonight in the PowerPoint are above and beyond any openings we may have. And they would be additional positions. So for example, well, our middle schools have, our middle schools have three assistant principals, one lucky school based on data.
Let me jump in, Dr. Vosberg. What she's asking, do they owe us money?
Okay, so they will, they will, yes, they will have a clawback provision. And I did talk about that in the first presentation. So what we've done with other programs is there'll be, they're, they're in the program for two years and they're working in the building. And they have to continue for two more years.
And where that 100,000 is just paying a salary, it is not paying for their educate, any additional education?
Right, we, we voted, you voted on the NIU contract, which is the tuition for NIU.
Right.
So there's three pieces, NIU contract that we've already voted on, IPA mentors, which we'll vote on in the summer. Each one will get a mentor that, that's like $3,000 per, per participant, which we've, we're doing right now. And then the extra money, if we add these positions above what we would normally have to fill a building.
Thank you. Wow, that's an investment.
Yes, it is, it is a big investment.
So I was just going to ask the same question that I asked Mrs. Detman and you alluded to some of it. But I guess I'd just like you to, I'd like to frame it a little differently, I guess. So you're, you're, you're over elementary schools, middle schools, high schools. We have some different things that we focused on at the elementary schools, more test scores. Middle schools, maybe more test scores at high schools, graduation. We've got freshman on track rate. I mean, what can, other than saying we're letting the principals choose from the, and maybe that's your answer. But can you give me specific examples of what's being done to address those budgets?
Okay, you're breaking up, but I, I, based on what you asked Heidi, what in the budget is going to move the needle academically? Is that a good summary?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would say you're right that the, the buildings have more resources at the building level. And we provided extensive training to develop a theory of action for the building to be very strategic with what they, what they might need to do. They've added positions like instructional coaches, they've added title one teachers, they've added behavior intervention specialists. Some have added extra counselors. So whatever they determine at the slightly based level is the biggest impact from my perspective of what I oversee. Long-term, I think this investment in the NIU program, from what I oversee directly, is going to be significant. The 10 people that we selected, I, you know, I'm very optimistic. There's, there was a really robust recruiting process that involved principals. We, we had 35 applicants to pick from and we didn't choose multiple people that in the past, I think would fill positions. So I think investing in this pipeline, we, we have, we have teachers that applied that have, you know, 10, 15 years of experience in our system. So the quality of candidate in this pipeline of developing building leaders. The number one resource, as we all know, is the classroom teacher. And number two, based on research, is the principal. But the principal is the one that hires, recruits, retains, evaluates, supports the teacher. So any investment we can put into principal development, I think is, is a worthy investment. And I think the research supports that.
Other board member comments or questions? Oh, hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Vosberg. Mr. Siegel, did you have a question?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. According to Laura, we have no public speakers. So, okay, if there are no further comments or agenda recommendations by the board, I'll take a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Siegel, second by somebody, by Anthony. All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:01 PM. Thank you all for your time and thank you all to the presenter as well.